Welcome, everybody. We're now about to start the Select Board meeting of December 15th, 2022. It is now 6:30 PM. And as the agenda shows, we have an executive session starting at 6:30 and then it's always a guest limit, but we're going to start the open session at 7:30 because we have three executive session items to cover. So I'd like to ask the Assistant Town Administrator to read the, just the executive session agenda, please.
Okay, good evening. So the executive session items are, item number one is the executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 38. Section 21A3 to discuss 31 Hunting Lane, 41 North Main Street, and Igor Lebasky Atel versus the Town of Sherwin. Number 21 MISCPS 000193, HPS, and 31 Hunting Lane LLC versus the Sherwin Board of Appeals, Housing Appeals Committee, number 2021-05, and 41 North Main Street LLC versus Sherwin Board of Appeals, Housing Appeals Committee, number 2021-06. Item number two is to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, Five Star Building Corp. versus the Town of Sherwin. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the town, and the Chair does so declare pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A and 3. Item number three is strategy session to prepare for contract negotiations with non-bargaining employee pursuant to General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A2, and that's the Fire Chief. You'll need a roll call vote chair to get into the executive session.
Okay, thank you. Do I have any, before we enter, any amended, suggested amendments to the executive session, the agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as read by Diane? That's, you got a second? Marian? Eric?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
And I am I as well. So I do declare that we need to enter the executive session to discuss these three items, and I move that we now move to executive session. Do I have a second?
Second.
Marian? You're muted still, Marian. But we can read lips, though. It's okay.
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
And I am I as well. And just so people know, George will be about 15 to 20 minutes late. So we are now in executive session. I'm now going to pause. Okay, we've got everybody back. And so we are now, I apologize for the delay. We're now going to start the open session portion of the Select Board meeting of December 15th, 2022 at 7:47 PM. And I'd like to ask the Assistant Town Administrator to read the open session agenda, please. Now you have to unmute yourself, Diane.
After the call to order, when I read the agenda, the board can vote to either amend it or approve the agenda as presented. We have a public comment, and tonight Heidi Doyle is here. She has a public announcement she would like to make. Items can be taken out of order, and topics are anticipated 40 hours in advance, may be added. Item number one is the consent agenda, which is the Town Administrative Payroll Warrant, draft minutes of November 17th and December 1st, and our next scheduled Select Board meeting is for January 5th, 2023. Item number two is consideration of a warrant article placeholder for the 2023 Annual Town Meeting, and that is Vicky Relles, Chair of the Personnel Board. She's asking for an amendment to the personnel plan, which is an addition of longevity pay. Item number 2B is an amendment to the Board of Assessors' warrant article 16 from the 2022 Annual Town Meeting, elected to appointed assessors being brought forward by Nancy Hess. Item number three is a discussion on the FY '24 budget process. Jerry Marseth, the Town Administrator, will speak on that. Consideration of Appointment to Lieutenant. Chief Tom Galvin is asking the board to consider the appointment of Luke Tedstone to the position of lieutenant. Then he'll give an update on the regional dispatch transition. Item number five is a consideration of licenses and permits for the ABC licenses, common VIT license, Class II licenses, stable license, and a request from the Heritage to extend their hours for New Year's. Item number six is consideration of grants from Chief Zach Ward from the Mass Department of Fire Services for the firefighter safety equipment, the amount of $17,381.56, from Massachusetts Interwaco Insurance Association, MYHA, for the FY '23 risk management, and the amount of $6,000, and a donation from the Sherwin Fire and Rescue Association for a new UTV skid unit, and the amount of $7,385. The board will also discuss the possibility of issuing a proclamation to Representative David Linsky. Item number eight is routine business, which is Select Board reports and a report from the Town Administrator.
Okay, I have one item that I would propose that we add. We got a letter, as you know, we have to submit comments on the 40B project on Washington Street. I think they're calling it Sherbert Homes. And we requested a 30-day extension from December 23rd for our response. We got a somewhat vague response today. We didn't get a response for eight to 10 days. It came in five minutes before this meeting. So it wasn't anticipated 48 hours in advance, but I feel it's necessary to discuss it tonight. So I propose that we add that to the agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Marian? Before we vote, are there any other suggested changes to the agenda? Okay.
I have a better motion, which is to adopt the agenda with the amendment proposed by you, so we can have one vote to do two things.
Okay, perfect. Do a second thought. All right, Marian?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
And I am I as well. So, so we're good to go with that. And so I think then that turns us over to Heidi.
Thanks. Good evening, everyone. I'm here on behalf of the Elder and Disabled Tax Aid Committee, doing an appeal for donations. Since COVID, donations have been really down, and we do have several families in town and elders that can really benefit from this program. So I just want to remind people that it is available for donations. It can be done online. A check may be payable to the Town of Sherwin, referencing the Elder and Disabled Tax Aid Fund. Happy to talk to people more about it. It's, information is on the assessor's website, or what qualifications would be involved. And also to remind people that if they are in need to look at the qualifications to see if they can apply. Aid is given out twice a year. The next deadline is February 28th, and that would be for some assistance in May. And then the next deadline is for next year would be August, when assistance is given in November. And also, the committee has one more membership that we're looking for. So if there's any volunteers, we'd be happy to have someone join the committee. Does not take a lot of work, and it does give some great joy to people. So thank you very much.
Thanks for that message, Heidi. I'm glad that the committee's active. So I'd like to take a motion to the consent agenda with one revision. It's 152023, the last item there. But do I have a motion with respect to the consent agenda?
So.
Second?
Second.
Marian?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
And I am I as well. Next word article is Vicky's. Talk about the longevity pay. Are you ready to brief us, Vicky?
Yes, I am. How is everyone?
We're good. We did have the, as you know, in the packet, we had the material that was prepared by you presumably and the team.
Yeah, the team, and we also met with Deb Seifring, ID, and Diane, and Jen Thompson, and it has been vetted by legal counsel as well. And the reason bringing it up to you is so that you could take a look at it. We are going to be working with advisory to present the warrant and to go through some background information as required. But this, the warrant, as you have it, is what we will be putting on the town meeting agenda. The warrant was basically, the impetus of this was a discussion that we had had about com, cost of living increases. And in going through that, some of the advisory members had questioned whether or not there was any longevity or any kind of pay, merit pay, that people, employees could get in addition to cost of living, and we'd had none. So because the merit pay is pretty much the town administrator's purview to really manage that and go over it, will be for this as well. But mostly, the merit pay is something that's out of the personnel's responsibility. But we thought that if we put forward a longevity plan, it would kind of suffice for that portion of it. And then the merit pay is another point of discussion going down the road. But longevity was something we could do quickly. We could get it through. We did a lot of, we went through, looked at other towns. We did an analysis of the current contract, union contracts, the current other, the other contracted groups in town, and looked at what their longevity pay schedules were. So what we did is we took kind of a, we looked at all of those. We took an average of that and then put that in the plan as you see it going forward. So I just wanted to present this to you before we go to advisory and before it goes on the, on the town warrant, the town meeting, so that you could take a look at it. And we just felt it was the right thing to do. Nothing has been in place for any of the municipal employees in town for a very long time, if ever. And this was, I have to tell you, because they've held the ship up before we got Jeremy on board, and they did, they all stepped up to the plate and did incredibly, incredibly, incredible job. We just felt it was really to give them something and say thank you for doing that, and to do it quickly so they could get it next year. Does anybody have any questions?
Well, I, Paul does, I have a clarifying question first, Paul. One thing is, so I think the language could be stronger in that I'm assuming this is an annual amount that we get paid, longevity pay, right? It's not just on your anniversary. So I think you might want to add the word annual somewhere there. It says that, you know, when they reach five years, they get, you could interpret it that you get it only on your fifth anniversary.
Yeah, it says the stipend will be divided into two by annual payments following the employee's anniversary.
Yeah, but you'll get it every year. In other words, you get it your sixth year, your seventh year, right? Not just the year of your anniversary.
Okay.
Unless I misunderstood, it's possible.
It's, some of this is a little ambiguous, so I, that clarity, that is fine.
So, so.
If you didn't, if you didn't see that, then, you know.
But I agree with everything you said, and it also is very strong in terms of retaining good people, you know?
Yes, that was the other reason.
Not only, not only the compensation, but there's an incentive to stay longer and not have turnover, which is expensive. So I got a host of questions. Paul was first, though.
So first, I want to say this is an excellent idea. Our employees are our most important asset. They make the town work well along with our volunteers. We have an excellent group of employees. I believe retention. I also believe that we should be supporting the Personnel Board. That's what we have a Personnel Board for. They're looking at these issues. And I think this is an excellent bit of work to have saw this and brought it forward. So I support it. I have just a technical lawyer's little thing to mention, which is that there is a state law that said that elected officials' compensation has to be annually voted by the town. And the way most towns do that is to have a warrant article to set the compensation paid by the town for elected officials. We already do a bit of an end run around that by having the compensation for elected officials as part of a much larger package with, is the budget for the town. But here, we're now going to be paying this stipend. Are we including elected officials? If we are, if the plan is to include elected officials, that means there has to be an annual vote on that amount for those officials each year.
I hadn't initially thought that they should, that elected officials should go in. But because elected officials are part of the municipal employee group, we decided to keep them in. So I guess from a standpoint of legal mechanics of this, we can go through, and it can be done for everybody automatically, but every year, there has to be a vote. Town meeting vote or just a vote, a town meeting?
Vote. But it can be as part of the omnibus budget. It can be a footnote. But again, most towns make it a very formal thing and have a whole article on elected officials. And oftentimes, you see like the, you know, the town clerk get up and say, gee, I believe I should get more compensation. And they make their case to the voters directly.
Right.
Elected officials have that right in that, that platform, and the voters have that right to set the compensation, the total.
Can you and I have a sidebar on this later? And you can tell me how we can go forward and make sure it's done? I didn't know that policy.
State advisories cooperation. We can leave this the way it is and have cooperation included in the omnibus. Or you just put it into each, each year's appropriation for their compensation.
Okay. All right.
And use this as guidance.
Okay.
But we can talk about it off.
Okay, I will. And just to interject here, because Nancy and I are on, I have to open a meeting for Personnel Board because there's only three of us. So technically, right now, I have to announce that we are having a meeting. Do you mind just doing that real quick?
No, it's good. You posted the meeting. I saw it also.
Yep. So I'd like to open the meeting at 8 o'clock. The agenda is going to be to discuss the warrant article Personnel is presenting, and that's, I think that's all I have to do. Do we have to, Nancy, we opened the meeting at 8 AM. I have to take a roll call?
Yeah.
All right. Vicky's, I, Nancy? Can you hear me, Nancy? You have to, you have to unmute.
I'm sorry. You want to make that 8 PM?
Yeah, 8 PM.
That's a good idea.
And I am an I.
Okay, all right.
All right.
Thank you.
Also, I would like to be part of the discussion because I did think about what Paul just said.
Well, yeah, the only thing is, we let the Select Board members speak first, Nancy.
We can, we should go offline with that because I don't want to.
That's fine.
I don't doubt, but we'll meet with Paul or talk to him afterwards. Okay. Sorry, go ahead, Jeff.
No problem. And you're finished, right? Paul, your hand's still up. You're all set. Eric, you're next.
I have that. Um, yeah, I just was curious. And thanks, Jeff, I had the same question as you about, you know, is it every five years, whatever it was? And that, I think it's clarified, but that's kind of the clarification. Is this based on FTE years? So the full-time equivalent years? Because some employees aren't full-time, and I am quite part-time. In fact, I think it might be some elected officials are like 30 hours or something like that. And when retirement is calculated, those type of employees are actually adjusted, not as like one year equals one year, but they're adjusted in that proportionate of their reduced hours to equivalent years. So they have to put in five years to get this equivalent of seven years in retirement, when that's adjusted. Or is, and is it also come, and Sherwin has a lot of odd type employee statuses, like on-call stipend employees, such as like, you know, fire department and stuff like that.
We didn't put that. It's basically, how did we word it so that it would, it was all benefit eligible municipal employees. And it does not include, so the ineligible goes towards people that are under collective bargaining agreement, contract, seasonal employees, and temporary employees are not eligible. And that is what the personnel plan says, what a non-eligible employee is. So I just, we just mimic that. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it answered the question for the stipend employees, but I was curious about like people who aren't full-time. Are they, as a year, a year still with them? It's not an adjusted year? You know what I mean? Like as retirement? Like people who are 30 hours a week or whatever, whatever they are.
Yes, if they're still, if they're benefit, if they are benefit eligible. So anything over 20 hours, basically, is.
Then a year of the year, essentially.
Yeah. And then as far as the retirement part goes, the, we did have something, there's another section we'll be going through with advisory that kind of gives a little overview, number-wise, on, on the retirement percentages, but I did not include it here with yours.
I don't use retirement as comparison because retirement, a year is not a year. You know, if you do less than full-time, then you actually are adjusted for your year is considering retirement, you know, tenure.
Okay. Okay.
Marian?
Oh, yeah, I had a question for you, Vicky. Well, first, I think this is a really good idea. My question is concerning the administration in Section 5. The human Director of Human Resources and Personnel Board is responsible for the administration, revision, interpretation, and application of this policy. I thought that was kind of vague, like revision of how, what kind of revision? Like changes in the amounts or changes in the rules, the interpretation? What does that mean?
No, it's, it's meant to be ambiguous. I didn't, I can't, what, I can't tell you what the future will bring. So in terms of interpretation, it would be if somebody, if there's a problem with one person's understanding of what this is versus what it really is, you know, it would be the TA along with the Human Resource Director. And if we needed to get involved, we could. But basically, revisions would be, you know, if somebody from advisory or the Select Board or a group wanted to present something that would revise the numbers or revise the requirements, then we'd have to, you know, take a look at that and make sure that, you know, that, that was in used town council to make sure those things are appropriate to put in there. So, and if there's somebody that it doesn't apply to, or there's a question of how it applies, you know, the town administrator is the first person that would manage this along with the Human Resources person. And then we would, like I said, we would get involved. But I think, and, and I, there wasn't any specifics put in here because I think there's a range of things that can go through with any of this.
So I ask quickly because we're voting on particular amounts tonight. Could those be revised in the future without?
We're not voting. I don't.
Voting anything.
Not voting on any warrant articles yet. I wouldn't, the warrant.
Voting on anything. All I'm doing is showing you what we've done, and there are amounts here. So whoever the town is going to vote on, you know, during the, you, I guess what we're looking for is basically for you to look at this, advisory is going to go through it after advisor goes through it to have, you know, meeting of the minds with everyone. And, and if you support it in front of town meeting, then everybody will know. And then, you know, basically, then it will be voted on for, for numbers. We took the amounts that we have here.
I wasn't questioning the numbers, Vicky, just to, you know, to accelerate things a little bit because I know we're short on time. I wasn't questioning the numbers at all. I was just questioning the mechanism whereby it can be changed.
Gotcha.
Well, I'll, I'll leave that.
It goes to town administrator first, and then with the Human Resources. And then if there's a legal issue, then it goes to legal counsel. I think if it's something that can't be dealt with from an HR standpoint with town administrator, then it probably has to go to town council to make sure that all our bases are covered.
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Dan Sickle, Chair of Advisory.
Hey, everybody. Thanks, Vicky, for pulling this together. I know you did this incredibly quickly in a short amount of time and look forward to getting a chance.
Good. I had a lot of help. They were, everybody stepped in on this one.
And look forward to getting a chance as this comes through advisory to talk about it more. I just wanted to pick up on Jeff's question, just to make sure there's just super clarity. So, you know, in just conversations around, I'd heard a number of different versions of the, on the question of whether this is annual or one time. So just to be super specific, if an employee hits the five-year tenure, they would then get the stipend in year five, and that would be it, or they would get stipend in year?
Year five to nine, they get 500.
Year nine.
10 to 14, it goes to 650, 15 to 16, every, from those years, it goes to 800.
And, and then when it goes up to 800, it would be like in year 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, and so on?
Correct.
The stipends, okay. So, so the intention, the intention is that the stipend is
Annual.
Compensated salary, and the salary remains at that higher, at that higher level?
Salary.
Right, the stipend, there's, there's a, you know, so I hit year five, I get a thousand, I get a $500 stipend. And for the next, you know, the, in year six, I also get a $500 stipend.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah. It doesn't relate, it doesn't relate to salary at all.
No, I understand that, but it's just that, that, that somebody's total compensation bumps by 500 your five, and it remains higher by 500.
Yes.
And I'm only, I'm only mentioning that because I think there was some ambiguity about that. So just
Yes, there was.
Clarity about it, and the language could be clear about that. I think it will help people.
Yeah, no, we have that every, I put now every year on the number and March dates.
Okay.
It's going to be two by annual payments. So it will be one half in September and one half in March. And when we come to you, Deb's put together a chart of cost and how that works out. And, you know, who, who really, at this point, who really is, who, who is employed that's applicable to them. And so we have that list as well.
Perfect. Thanks.
All right. No, thank you. Deb?
Yeah, he asked it better than I did, but he's basically asked the same.
Yeah, 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 I know. That was a good question.
You'll have to be careful, though, because, you know, the COLA applies your base salary. So every year, you'll have to back the 500 or whatever the amount is out, then apply COLA to their base salary, then add the 500 back in, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I think that the 500, yeah, it shouldn't.
We're not increasing the 500.
No, no, no. It's just a, it's a check.
Just, yeah, no, I know, but just to be.
It's a check. So every two months in the year, you get a $250 check. So it has, it shouldn't be included in the salary number at all.
Yeah. Okay. And one more thing I'd suggest, even though Paul provides good legal advice, I'd like you to run this by Chris Petrini also, since he's our town council.
They have, they've looked at it already.
Already? Okay.
But I'll give it to them again, because we've made some changes. And once we get through, through advisory, then I'll have, before it goes into the town, make sure that they look at it again. But they were my first, they're the first ones I, I put this to before we even worked on it a lot. So just to make sure we're, we're doing it correctly.
Good. Deb Seifring?
Uh, yes, I just, I just for like, you know, a point of reference, based on our current staff and the current proposed longevity pay, this would be an annual cost to the town of $10,850, just as a point of reference.
Thank you.
I just want to respond to something that George said. He said that we're not going to take any votes. I think we ought to signal to the Personnel Board whether we're going to put this article on the warrant, or we're going to put a placeholder for an article as finalized on the subject matter on the warrant. And as far as I'm concerned, the Personnel Board should have the right to present to the voters an article like this. And therefore, I don't want to bind the board's particular language, but I want to have the board say to the Personnel Board that, that we'll put this on, as, right now, as a placeholder on the warrant that is under our responsibility to issue, and we'll look at final language later.
Well, the warrant doesn't close until January 10th. Wouldn't we do that in a composite, not vote on each individual one? We would look at the draft warrant on January?
Right. That's what. And when Paul and I talk about this every year, Paul wants to vote for things the minute he sees them. I'd say, let's wait and be more organized because. I'd say let's wait and be more organized because we'll come around to January tenth and we'll be like, wait, did we vote on that? And, and it just gets very confusing when we do things piecemeal. Every year we have the same back and forth, Paul, that. When we do things piecemeal, everybody gets confused and, and we, and it's not organized. This is a great article and I would totally support putting it on the warrant, but I think we should do it all. The day the warrant closes, we should go through the list. And vote whether to include articles on the warrant or not.
But then it's too late for them to get us, ten signatures to put it on the warrant. That's actually quite, uh, rude to the people who have articles. If they don't know whether we're going to put it on or not. You're, you're forcing them to go get signatures and then lock themselves into language that may not be the language that we actually want to have. What I'm trying to say is they don't need to try and lock the language down in a citizen petition. Because we're going to, we're going to have an article like this that we're all going to be working on, on the warrant. So they have that assurance, the warrant's going to close and, and whatever.
Okay, I hope you're keeping track of when we vote on these piecemeal because.
Well, I, I think.
Can I, I don't think we need to, I don't think we need to do this. I think as personnel, we can do this.
Yeah, that's what I was, Vicky, you're saying what I was trying to say better too is, I think is the sponsor of this is the personnel board is.
Right, we have the ability to create a warrant to change the personnel plan.
Yeah.
This is what we're doing.
It's not a select board warrant, it's a personnel board warrant and, and we'll review, I agree with George, we'll, we'll have. Whatever, it's not just, um, keeping track, but it's more efficient. We don't need to, we can discuss them all in one session, so I.
And I feel, I felt like these being presented tonight and we'll probably have some at our next meeting. That we, we kind of, it's more for feedback purposes of, of, hey, we think this is a great idea. Here's some ideas that you might want to change and that's, that's what I thought the purpose of this was.
I did, George, sorry to interrupt you, but I did ask legal counsel if I needed to get this through select word for us and they said no. What they told me was that this was purely a. Um, gesture of good faith to show it to you first. Uh, before we went to advisory that I didn't necessarily need to do that. Um, I was going to do that anyway, but I said, do I need to get your approval? And he said, no. So I took that as this, the personnel board can go ahead and make changes. Uh, proposing a warrant on their own and they don't need select board. Um, I don't need to get signatures and I don't need the select board to promote, to support, not support, to, um, what's the word I'm looking for? To, um, to, what's the word?
Yeah, I agree, I agree, Vicky, you can sponsor articles as, as the board.
That's what he said to me that I didn't need. So I, I think Paul, what I'm looking for is what you absolutely said is your support. I, I, and I totally appreciate all of your input, um. And if you have any thoughts after this meeting, definitely send them to us because, you know, I want this to go through without a lot of problematic situations. So that's why you all have a lot to bring to the table in terms of experience. Jeremy has seen, uh, these, I'm sure in, um, in the town he's been in. So, um, and then Framingham and other towns that people have exposure to have them as well. So. If there's any ambiguity, any things that need clarity, why don't you look this over again? You know, please send me an email, let me know that, because I want this to be pretty clean, clean when we go through and, and give it to the town. So, um, so yeah, I, I, your support would be incredibly, um, helpful for this if, yeah. And I probably, you know, we wouldn't do it if we didn't have it. So thank you for that. And definitely we'll have more numbers that we can go through, uh, when we go through advisory. Is that good for everyone?
Discussion, I think, too.
Right, so again, make sure you let us know and Paul be in touch with you to clarify some things. So it's eight eighteen, I am going to adjourn the personnel meeting. Um, all in favor, Vicky, I, Nancy?
She's muted, but she said I.
All right, eight eighteen, and I thank you all for your time.
Thanks, Vicky. All right, the next item on the agenda is Nancy to talk about, um, elected to appointed assessors.
Yes. Okay, well, first of all, I'd like to thank Drew for agreeing, agreeing to stay on the board of assessors. Until we've had a chance to put an article before town meeting, providing for a residency component to the new board of assessors appointment process. And thank Paul for his part in that negotiation. As you may remember, the statute put on the town meeting floor last spring for a vote did not allow for an amendment. And we promised the assembled that we would work on one while we still had taxpayer representation. In that process, town council has agreed that we need to make it a bylaw to avoid potential legal consequences. Should a resident applicant get special consideration. The proposed bylaw is meant to help guarantee that a genuine attempt will be made to fill at least one position on the board of assessors. With a Sherburne resident if possible, so that the taxpayers' interests are represented on this board regardless of who sits on the select board down the road. We shouldn't make or not make laws or bylaws based on who is in positions currently, but rather make them to stand the test of time. None of our other boards or committees have no town representation on them. And as you know, the assessing department is the foundation for the town's finances and the board of assessors is the oversight for that department. This board signs off on the values attached to every home, the taxes we must pay, whether we qualify for exemptions, abatements or special classification. And then it's all done accurately, so we don't waste resources on landing in court. They must oversee and sign off on a tax rate in a timely manner, assuring that due diligence has been done, so all new growth is captured. An appropriate overlay is determined. They must sign off on all commitments for collection of taxes, so the collector can issue bills in a timely manner. To assure the ability of the town to pay its bills, keeping the Department of Revenue, the auditors and bond rating agencies happy. This kind of oversight should not fall entirely on an already overburdened town administrator. It's prudent to have someone on this board with a vested interest, who lives with what is done here. And we should not leave that to chance. I don't believe that the time we are allotting and the token amount of money we're paying. These people is enough to make them really know our town, our goals, our priorities and what we really care about. Though it makes some people roll their eyes, it does not take long, once you live here, to recognize Sherburne really is unique in many ways. With the appointment of two professional assessors and a professional director of assessing. The education of the third member should not be as great. Uh, um, as great a burden or issue for the director of assessing. It'll be a benefit to the average taxpayer if there is someone bringing their point of view to the table. As well as that member being able to bring an understanding of the whats and whys back to the taxpayers. A resident serving on this board also gives the director more flexibility and access to. A necessary signature when documents arrive out of sync with scheduled meetings. Which is not uncommon, especially with motor vehicle commitments from the state. And with the final tax rate setting process where delay can have a negative effect on cash flow. We've worked hard for and are very proud of our AAA bond rating, which impacts us all with the cost of borrowing. Let's give our residents the advantage by keeping representation on this piece of the finance team. The proposal before you has been vetted before town council. And as you can see on the red line version, some of my favorite parts have been removed. I had hoped for more teeth. Unfortunately, laws got in the way. Even so, it is better than nothing. And though it does provide a large escape route, it should leave no question about the intent. And I, I don't know any way to read the, the, uh. The bylaw as it's proposed, or whether you have that in front of you and don't want me to read it.
I don't think we need you to read it, but one question I do have, and then Paul, recognize Paul, who is the sponsor of this article?
Well, I am hoping it will be the board of selectmen, so I don't have to go collect signatures for a citizen's petition.
Well, we'll, we'll discuss that in a minute, I think, and, um, let's let Paul have his hand up first and then George speak.
Yes, my comment was that, uh, last year when we had the issue of having an appointed board of assessors. There were people who were opposed to it because they felt there should be. Local residents on that board. And in order to, to, uh, move the town forward. We came up with this plan of going forward and making this. Board of assessors appointed and separately, the following year, bringing up the issue of. The, the residence piece. And I think based on that, that. Compromise this, this, uh. Change to the board of assessors was approved both by town meeting and at the ballot box. So now we have this issue. Of this, this, uh, uh, carryover from last year. I believe, A, we should put it on the warrant and not require Nancy to go get signatures. And B, it makes sense to me, and I think to many people. That there, there be an effort to, to, to put a, a local resident who's a stakeholder in the community. Uh, and affected by the actions taken by the board of assessors on the board of assessors. And the language that's being presented says if we can't do it, then. We, we appoint someone who's a non-resident. So. There always will be a full board of assessors. But it gives recognition to the points made by Nancy that there's some value. To the community of having somebody from the community on the board.
Thank you, Paul, George.
Yeah, I was just curious, Nancy talked about, you know, these things, has she consulted with our town assessor with Wendy? To ask how things have gone since we've appointed some new assessors. Uh, have you checked to see how that's gone this year?
No, because I don't think that's relevant. I think we can't make a rule on how the people who are serving us at the. Present time are, are serving us. If it's effective, fine, but we don't know from year to year. We want to have the advantage of being able to, um, make a priority out of a resident. And hopefully, things are going well and, and we have two professional, um, assessors who. Don't have to do the classes and so forth, that someone coming on, so it should make it easier. To function because they supposedly know all the rules and, and know the processes to go, go forward.
But, but proposing this, wouldn't it make sense to have a conversation with our assessor?
Well, I felt from, from, um, the reaction last year that there was some, and I have had. Conversations with prior assessors.
Why not Wendy? Why can't you have a conversation with Wendy?
Well, I could have a conversation, but I did not feel that that was necessary. I don't think that she can give me any, um, projection as to how this would be down the road. I mean, this.
Marion, I, I have a comment also, but I'll let Marion go, uh, next.
Right, my comment's a little, a little bit like George's in, in the sense that i- in principle, I think this is a good idea. I think we were fortunate this year that Drew Cheval agreed to stay on. He's done a really good job. Uh, we have two, uh, outside people that we don't know. It's nice to know that Drew is there, but I, I would like to, so. Off the bat, I'm in favor of this, uh, Nancy, but I still, I'd like to hear from the assessor and. From Drew Cheval actually himself, uh, and maybe we can, you know, invite him to come and comment when we have a more. Formal consideration, but I don't think there's any reason for us not to let this go forward. And, uh, you know, if, if we end up agreeing, I would be in favor of the select board even, uh. Uh, sponsoring this or, or the board of assessors sponsoring, either way, whatever is, is easier. The important thing is to get the facts in front of the town, let them.
Jeff, Wendy is on here, if you want to invite her to say something a- after you're done with that, I know you have comments, so.
Yeah, I, that's a good suggestion, George. So my comment though is that I would not support the select board sponsoring this article at all. And the reason why is because we asked the voters last year to make all the positions appointed. And they told us that that's what they, as the majority, wanted to do. So I don't like going back to the voters who said, you know, you told us what you wanted, but we didn't like your answer, so we're asking you again. So if it's a citizen's petition, it can certainly be on the warrant, but, and it's up to the select board to vote, but I would not. Um, support this as a select board, uh, warrant, s- select board sponsor of an article. I wouldn't. Recommend that. I think it should be a citizen's petition, um, in, in my view, so. So that's how I feel, that's just one of five people on the select board, though. I'll let Eric go and then, I don't know whether Wendy wants to talk, she's welcome to if she wants, but Eric, you, your hands up.
I feel the pressure, I'm the only one not spoken on this, I'm just kidding. I'm just a point of clarification, because I do appreciate the part where it says like, if no qualified resident, you know, blah, 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 then, you know, we're going to do an. Uh, do a non-resident. Can we define what qualified is? Is there, um, like a set, are there certifications or whatever it is, our classes, certifications? Which apply to this and actually put that right into it, so therefore there's not this subjective. Like, I could just see this going right down the hole of like, oh, so and so's good or not good and this and that, and then. We have to go look at their resumes and kind of get to that. And I, I like a clean line between qualified and not qualified. Guess that's not asking you, Nancy, as the proposer of this, or anyone that wants to answer.
Well, when they were elected, they were given a certain amount of time to get the classes and so forth. I don't know in your process of hiring what you looked at, but. I'm assuming that because you're appointing, you are getting somebody that is already qualified, having gone to classes and so forth. I think that more important than that is a person who has the interest and will be. Uh, involved in the process as we've had in the past. Your problem has been not being able to get people who have the time. To put into this, apparently, uh, in, in numbers that you have for a three-person board of residents. I am hoping that we will have one person who will be willing to be a representative, whether they have the background. I think it is something that we've demonstrated through the years can be gotten by being part of the board for. Uh, uh, in a period of time, whatever that happens to be, so.
Let me, let me be more specific. I'm saying so, right now the proposed language says, if no qualified Sherburne resident applies to fill a vacancy. The select board is required to recruit a prospective appointees, blah, blah, blah. Can we define in the bylaw? What qua- what qualified Sherburne resident means? Do you know what I mean? Like, I don't know the language. It's, there's a certification and frankly, I don't know the name of it offhand, but I'm, I guess, you as a proposer, can we add an actual metric? Into the actual bylaw, so it doesn't have to be that subjective, that's all I'm asking.
Uh, I don't think that it is realistic to think that you're going to pluck a certified and fi- uh, assessor. Out of the residents, but they would have to be allowed time. And I know that the law says. If they serve for two, within the two years, they have to go to school, so, um. I, I think that what you have as minimum qualifications on this is something that could be worked out. Afterwards, I don't think that you need to nail down, and I certainly don't think that you can make the expectation that they're going to be a certified. Assessor to apply as a resident. I think the important thing is that they are a resident who can be in touch with what's going on in the town. And bring that to the table when you've got two professionals and you've got a professional director of assessing. That's there to cover the, the rest of the law.
Okay, uh, Wendy, you raise your hand first, probably let Marion finish the select board comments out, then you'll be next, okay?
Oh, right, I just, uh, want to add what I, I agree with Eric. If, if you're going to say qualified, you have to know what that means. If you're not going to say what it means, why say qualified? Just take the word.
Okay, thanks. Wendy?
Uh, yes, I just wanted to clarify, um, so the law recently changed. And if we brought on a resident assessor, they will need to take, it's called course one oh one. It's a one-week course with an open book test. Um, and they need to take that within twelve months of becoming, um, appointed. The two appointed assessors that we have now have actually, um. One just retired after twenty-five years from the town of Holliston as an assessor. And she's, has about thirty-five years of experience. And we also have, um, another appointed assessor at O'Neill. Who has been an assessor for, I believe, over twenty-five years. And he is currently an assessor in another community. who has been an assessor for, I believe, over 25 years. And he is currently an assessor in another community. So to answer the qualification question, I did seek out our one accredited assessor who's taken, you know, the nine courses you need to take and he was on the board for, for four years, for four terms. And said it was one term too long and he's trying to slow down. So he is not interested. So I did try to find a resident to fill that. So if that gives you any clarification as to someone who's qualified or not qualified, Drew couldn't make it tonight, but I'm parroting what Drew has said that this is move that a lot of communities are making. And because the work has become more technical, I do have to say, and thank you, George, for, for bringing that up and asking me how things went. The revaluation went very smooth and one takeaway for me was that I didn't have to recreate documents to show my board members. They were able to go directly into the Department of Revenue website, login. They know how to navigate the website, look at my documents, review my work and sign off electronically in the D R R website. I was also at a moment's notice. Give them a call. I go through a revel every five years. You have questions if you're doing something every five years and they both called me back within five minutes and helped me through. So there was that added benefit. So just to let you know how things are going. And we actually get signatures more promptly than we have in the past. So one of the assessors drives by every morning at eight and will stop in if we need anything. So just to give you an idea, and again, I'm parroting Drew. What we do is not discretionary. If you qualify for Chapterland, it's per statute. If you qualify for an exemption, it's per statute. If, you know, valuations, it's per statute. We have to fall into a specific category in order to receive a certification and our tax rate. And that's pretty much what Drew said last year. So that's all, but thank you.
Thanks, Wendy. Marion, you have another question?
Oh, well, Wendy just explained why it's good to have some qualify, some card-carrying assessors on our board. And we do have two of them. And with this change in the bylaw, we'll still have two of them. She also said that the resident can get trained after they join the board. So basically, we haven't yet heard how it worked with one resident and two card-carrying assessors. So I, I don't know. I think we just have to make a judgment column. I, I'm not asking for a response on that, but yeah.
Nancy, you have one more point to make?
Oh, um, Marion covered the first part that, that yes, with their, she made my case. You have two professionals. Things are going well. It would be good to have the representation of resident. And, and it's not going to make the whole department totally dependent on that resident being able to function the same as the two professionals. And I'm so glad and so happy that you found two people that are working out well. It may not always be the case, but it would be good to have resident, resident representation there regardless of whether they have taken the course already or not. If you've got two professionals as qualified as Wendy says these people are, then it, then that's very helpful, but it still doesn't eliminate the benefit of having a resident. Thank you.
Did you want to add something, Wendy, or is your hand just so up?
No, I just wanted to add that Drew Cashal has been on the board for six years. And so I'm not dealing with training a new member of the board. And so he is now with, you know, less help, I guess, or support. It, it's not as though if Drew steps off and we have to get a new member, we start the whole process again. Drew's been on for six years.
Okay. I guess my only comment is, you know, I still wouldn't support this being a select board motion or select board warrant article. So I don't know how the other select board members fe- feel. I don't know that we need to vote tonight, but it seemed to me it might be worth for you to continue getting signatures to, to get this on the warrant as a citizen's petition from my perspective. Do any other select board members want to comment on that?
I'm, I'm kind of with you, Jeff.
Yeah, I've come around to that too, Jeff.
I'd like to wait to see some of the more information comes in. Cause I'm, I'm not, I understand the concern of, uh, you know, a board which has financial, having no residents on it. And I'd like to see some more information as it comes in about, you know, how it's performed to date. And, um, what was the other thing we asked about? I would still like to see something about qualifications, maybe in a timeframe in there that says has to get X classes within three months or something like that. Do you know what I mean? I don't like the, I'm iffy on the subjective nature about, you know, the qualified or not.
Go ahead, Paul.
Oh, my, my thought is that we should sponsor it as a courtesy to, to someone who's been, you know, a long-serving town official to require her to go out get 10 signatures. It's easy to get those 10 signatures, but why? Why are we making her do that? It just seems like we should be facilitating democracy, facilitating letting people present issues. This was an issue that was discussed last year. Uh, and I feel many people voted for the change in the assessors with the thought that this issue was going to be addressed this year.
Motion, Paul. The motion was, do we want them to be all appointed? And that's what passed.
Yes, and I'm not saying it wasn't. I'm not saying it wasn't. I'm saying when I was.
I understand, but.
Advocating for that.
Appointed. And so I think we have to be careful that we're not, you know, disregarding what the voters told us last year.
When I was advocating with voters to vote in favor of this, I mentioned that we would be separately considering this issue. So whether that influenced the vote or didn't influence the vote, I certainly do not agree that that was not in somebody's mind when they voted for making the assessors appointed.
Well, so we meet again on January 5th and the warrant closes on January 10th. So are you suggesting that on January 5th, we can vote whether we want to sponsor this bill or not?
I'm just saying, why are we making Nancy go?
Because that's what I think. That's what I think. I'm only casting my opinion. I don't think it's appropriate for the select board to sponsor this warrant article.
I mean, I'll say, I'm not ready to vote tonight. I'm just gonna, I'm not ready to vote tonight. A few more questions. I'd like to see.
Suggest is that we can put this on the agenda for January 5th and we can decide the warrant doesn't close till the 10th. We can decide if the select board wants to sponsor this or have it be a citizen's petition. Whatever this.
I think we should discuss it again on the 5th.
Yeah.
I agree.
Okay.
And, you know, Nancy can get what you require, what 10 signatures?
So.
Signs.
You still have 10 days, five days to get 10 signatures.
In advance, just in case. I mean, that's not too hard.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks, Nancy.
Thank you.
Jeremy, you're next on the budget process?
Uh, thank you, Jeff. Out of respect for the, the guests we have waiting, I'd request that this be moved later on your agenda, maybe after item number six.
That's fine. No problem.
Thank you for doing that, Jeremy.
Tom, you've got two items.
I do, and I don't know why my camera's not coming up.
Don't worry about it. We can hear you fine.
Okay. First of all, we'll start. So as we've done a couple of times already since in the last year, I come before you for the promotion of one of our officers. Back when I started in November of 2021, I knew there would be a time in the near future that we'd be reporting our next lieutenant is Lieutenant David Bento at the time was a very clear on his, his plan for retirement. So almost immediately I began a vetting process for two potential candidates, Sergeant Luke Tedstone and Sergeant David Nolte. And that became almost a year-long interview process. Both sergeants bring a well-rounded skill sets to the department and have provided leadership for many years. I knew it would be a difficult decision as both are more than capable. As I continued to learn more about the department and the sergeant's other duties and job assignments became available. Earlier this year, we evaluated the possibility of adding a comfort dog to the department. And part of that process was selecting a handler from the department. Ultimately Sergeant Nolte was chosen to fill that position. And he and West have been doing an incredible job in the community in the short time West has been with us. With that assignment, it narrowed the candidate pool and made things much easier for me. Sergeant Tedstone has been acting in a quasi-lieutenant role for some time and has been instrumental in helping me through my first year with the department. Sergeant Tedstone began his career with the department as a part-time officer in 1998, transitioned to full-time in 2007, and was promoted to the rank of sergeant in 2011. Sergeant Tedstone has served the department in a variety of capacities. He was a dare officer, a use of force firearms taser and Leslie's ammunition instructor. He's handled vehicle ordering and upfitting as well as vehicle maintenance. Served as a liaison to our regional jail diversion program with Holliston and Hawketon. Served as the public records access officer accreditation manager and handles a variety of day-to-day activities, including scheduling, assisting with payroll, all while still serving as a shift supervisor. Sergeant Tedstone has attended a lengthy list of specialized training, including basic detective school, sexual assault investigator, child abuse investigator. He's also completed the FBI leader trilogy of supervisory leadership, command leadership and executive leadership. And attested, attended the FBI leads command college. Recently, he's attended master leader and essential leadership training with the Leaders Helping Leaders Network. Sergeant Tedstone is also a certified peace mountain bike instructor and certifies both recruit and veteran level officers. He's been married to his wife Jen for over 20 years and they have three children, Will, Nicole and Kyle. So tonight I'm asking you to vote to appoint Sergeant Luke Tedstone to the rank of lieutenant, conditional on the successful negotiation.
I move to nominate Officer Tedstone to the ranking lieutenant.
Okay.
Second.
Excellent. All in favor, Marion?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Well.
Aye.
Eric?
I.
I am, I as well. Congratulations. I think it's a great promotion myself.
And I don't know if Luke was on the meeting, if you want to put him on the.
I would like to, I was just gonna say that. You wanna say a few words, Luke?
Sure. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Chief Galvin. Thank you to the board. I'm very appreciative and excited at this opportunity. As Chief Galvin said, I've been working here for a while. During my time, I've been fortunate to work with some great officers and forge some great relationships with members of the community. I'm excited to continue to work with our great group of officers, many of which are new, many of which are newly promoted. So that we can continue to make sure that they're getting the tools, support and training they need. So we're able to retain and continue to develop them. As you know, on the board, Chief Galvin's been doing an excellent job. This is a great department to be part of right now. I'm very interested. I'm very excited to be part of the department. We're in a really good place and I'm excited to continue to work with the chiefs to, to keep the department moving forward in our direction.
Awesome. Thanks for your contributions and congratulations, Luke.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Just on a quick note, how long for the contract, is that something I should get together with Jeremy to begin working on or is there a particular board member or? Okay.
I would go for Jer.
Okay.
Jeremy would be fine.
Um, and just to update you on our transition to the Holbrook Regional Communication Center. We are scheduled to transition on January 2nd, which has been the planned transition date all along. Things have been moving along very quickly of late. Uh, over the past two months, we've conducted a series of Sherburne-specific training for all of the dispatchers at the regional center. A couple of those trainings were conducted at the center and one year we did at the, at the police department. The final training we did just the other day, and actually during that training, we worked with the center and the Holbrook local cable access to do a video shoot and we'll be putting up an onboarding video for the community in the next, in the coming days. They're just doing some editing for us on that. We also conducted, the rec conducted an information session for the council on aging last Friday. Uh, that was well-attended and we had some great questions from, uh, from the public on that. We're able to answer a lot of questions. There's been a lot of work completed, a lot of upgrades, physical security upgrades at the fire stations and in here at the police station. There's still a lot ongoing here at the police station. As we all know, supply chain issues have, uh, you know, put some things a little bit on the back burner, but we are still, as I said, on schedule to, to move forward. The, we've had some temporary upgrades to the radio systems and antennas were installed last week. And the permanent work actually began yesterday and there were trucks on the road today beginning to run fiber network around town. So all is on schedule. Things are moving very, very well. And then some other positive news about the district. We learned just this week that our neighbor Holliston has also conditionally signed on to become a member of the dispatch.
Excellent. We're looking forward to it. Uh, you're finished, Tom?
Yeah.
Okay, Marion, I don't know if you had your hand up from before or?
Well, I just wanted to say something about Officer Tedstone. I don't know if, if you all.
He's Lieutenant Tedstone to you.
Yes. I just want to say how impressed I was reading his CV. It's really quite incredible how much training and education goes into being, you know, a good lieutenant, excuse me, a good police officer. And I think probably is true of many of our officers, but it was really a pleasure to, to read it in detail. So thanks for that.
Hey, look at that. And just when I finish, I get the camera.
I have to get you the camera on the dispatch center to, to join us.
Excellent.
All right. Thank you both.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Very much. Okay, next up, Jeannie and consideration of licenses and permits. And do you want to just briefly mention the new process too, Jeannie?
Um, I spoke with Ryan Melville from the AVCC as far as the licenses and in the past, you've all come in and signed every single one. And he said that as long as the board is fine with just saying that the, when the license was approved and listing your name, that's all that they require. And for the one-day pouring licenses, you've been doing that for the last year. You haven't signed them. You've come in. I, it's just said that it was approved at your meeting and that's fine. So I did all the licenses separate, new this year. It just, it lists your name. It lists the day that the licenses were approved. And I think if you want to go ahead and do it that way, that's fine. If you all want to come in and sign them, I can redo them.
No, I think I'm speaking for the board out of turn, but I think we're fine with the select board carry the day here. So there's a total of five of them here. The select board, shall we vote? We can vote on all five as one group, I think, can't we? Well, as an exception. So, so do I have a motion on the license for AVCC common victor class two, stable and heritage extended hours? The five items are. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, Marion?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Oh.
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
I am, I as well. Thank you, Jeannie.
Thank you.
Thanks for saving this time. Mr. Ward, you're up, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Chief Ward.
Thank you. Before you are two grants and a donation, if you want, I'll just go through all three of them very quickly. The first one, the firefighter safety equipment grant. We're successful in obtaining those funds to purchase PPE for the fire department in the form of ballistic protection for responses to things like activists. We're successful in obtaining those funds to purchase PPE for the fire department in the form of ballistic protection for responses to things like activism allowance and. Events like that. Hopefully we never have to use it. We also received a six thousand dollar Maya grant. And that's actually for IT security upgrade. So that'll be turned over to the IT coordinator. And then last but not least, the donation from the Fire and Rescue Association. That's for the, the SCID unit for the UTV that the board. Approved for us to purchase from the revolving equipment fund. And that's what we have.
What's a UT SCID?
So that's a great question, Mr. Dorensis. So the utility terrain vehicle, that's the off-road vehicle we can take into the woods. We most often use them to go into places like the Rocky Narrows. To rescue injured hikers. The SCID unit is what goes into the back of it. So it has. It adds the rescue capability to the UTV vehicle and in this case for us. Firefighting capability. There's a fire pump on it, a water tank, fire hose. We can drive. You know, a mile into the woods to put out a fire if we needed to.
So I've noticed that you've come to us frequently with. Grants and very pleased with that. Can you give me a sense of? How many dollars you brought into the community with your grant obtaining skills?
So I'm. Recently trying to calculate that and I think I might be missing a few, but. With the upgrade, the upgrades that we're receiving through the. Move to the Holbrook Dispatch Center, the fire department received approximately half a million dollars in equipment and other upgrades. I think over the last three years, we're approaching. About a million dollars. I know it's north of nine hundred thousand. I think it's close to a million.
Well, thank you. Thank you on behalf of the community. Thank you for. Making the fire department better with these grants.
Thank you for your remarks. Seriously.
Absolutely. I think we all support it. So thank you.
We already make the motion to accept the grants?
Paul always makes those motions.
I beat Paul to it. Sorry, Paul.
All right, you get the second call.
I forgot to make the motion.
You can second it, Paul.
I second it.
Marion?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Well.
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
I am I as well. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Okay, item seven is the proclamation for David Linsky. We've talked about this, having a proclamation. Just to recognize his years of service to, I think it's close to twenty years, Paul. You probably know.
Seventeen.
Seventeen. So. You know, we debated about content. I, I'm advocating that we just, all our proclamations that we do for others, like the Boy Scouts and other ones have been pretty high level. You know, thanking you for your service. We don't try to list specific. Contributions that they've made because there's so many and particularly over seventeen years, there's many, many things that David has done. So. What I would suggest is that we. You know, he's still, he won't be sworn in till mid-January, right, Paul? So if we meet on January fifth, I think he's still representing us on January fifth. I'm not sure when he gets sworn in, but. When, when James Arena DeRosa gets sworn in. But why don't we, would you work with Diane and draft the proclamation, Paul?
Yes, that'd be an honor and a privilege. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll do, we'll just have that Diane on the agenda on the fifth, just to approve the final version. So. Did you have a comment on this?
Uh, not on this, but I, I thought we blew through all those approvals of licenses so fast. That we, I think we missed. A, a request from the heritage to extend their hours.
I mentioned it.
He mentioned it. It was in the motion.
Oh, it was in the motion. Okay.
In the motion, it was the E number five heritage request to extend. Did you want to comment on that specifically?
Uh, I do have to comment on that specifically because they need, they, they talk about. Oh, this is in September for indoor, outdoor music. Yeah. They want to have a liquor license and music going on New Year's Eve until one AM. Obviously. New Year's party's got to go till one AM. There's no question, but. We did have an issue that we. Hashed through for many months on select board over the impact of loud music on neighbors. And at the time it was mainly be, it was, and the bylaw that came out of it that was passed at town meeting. Was basically about outdoor music events. But I think it's worth. Maybe communicating to the heritage that we assume that the music will be indoors and will be at a level that doesn't. Impact the neighbors across the street.
For New Year's you're talking about.
Right.
Yeah. It probably is going to be below zero, so it might have to be.
Well, you, you never know, you know, if they have the windows open, everybody's dancing and it could be, or just to avoid.
It's just one night. That's why I think it's not, you know, before.
It's New Year's.
Not only the noise with the lights and everything else.
Yeah. Okay.
And I think for the, for the New Year's Eve thing, I think it's just a, the liquor license ends at a certain time. It's just a time that they can serve alcohol later that night.
Yeah, that's fine, but.
I don't think it's any, anything for outside, so.
I had one more question. This is just a question, not a criticism, but going through. The, you know, being a horse person, I looked at all the horse farms just to see.
Ron.
Horses everybody has. And I did notice that one of them. Sweet Metal Farm is requesting a license for thirty horses. And you know. This is not for discussion here, but I question whether they have. Humane facilities for thirty horses. So I got to wondering. What are the, what are the other? Basic oversight that the town has on things like farms and facilities? To make sure that we have some sort of communication with the animal control or, you know, animal welfare or whatever. To make sure that. Animals on farms are not like overcrowded and, and abused.
Jeannie's got her hand. I don't know the answer to that because they have a lot of critters besides horses there too, I think.
Exactly. Yeah. On that.
Um, they, they, they had a license last year for thirty horses. Kim Mora goes out. She makes sure that they have enough. Shelter and there, the horses are in good shape every year. And so this is the same license number that they had last year.
Okay, my question, just somebody's watching over it. That's.
Yeah.
Can I just add to that, that the town does have an animal inspector? That's Kim Mora. That's part of her function is to do exactly what Marion was asking.
Okay. Super.
All right, great. So Jeremy, we're returning to item number three, fiscal year twenty-four budget process.
Thank you. Well, I'm getting to know all of your budget processes here in town. And I wanted to get the, the board's preference on how you would like to see the budgets this coming budget cycle. So. As you know, the advisory committee has put out but their budget guidance that's been distributed to all the budget makers. The advisory liaisons have been assigned and advisory schedule's been set up to discuss those budgets in detail. We actually, we had a department head meeting, full department head meeting on Wednesday morning where we talked more about the budget process. And advisory's guidance and preparation of budgets. And we've scheduled meetings with all the department heads, actually starting next week. We have quite a, a schedule Diane and I to, to sit with all the departments to, to review their budgets and to get to know their departments better. So it's very timely for me to get to, to sit and kind of get to know their bud, budgets better, get to know what they do. You know, their concerns, their challenges, their, their, you know, their good works. So we're starting that next week. And reviewing all the budgets under the select board. And we are, we're requesting that all the budget makers submit their budgets to the interim finance director by December thirtieth. That's when they're due and then she'll work to compile a full roll-up. You know, within, you know, the early week of, of January, a full roll-up of the budget. So we'll have it all compiled together. In years past, I'm told the budget makers would all come before the select board and, and discuss their budgets. We can certainly do that if that's the preference of the board or we have a modified approach to suggest you consider. Certainly the, the four largest departments, the four largest budgets, the police department, fire department, public works and town buildings. Are worthy of, of, you know, detailed discussion before the board. And we do anticipate about five departments that may not meet advisory's guidance. So that may be another trigger to be discussed in, in more depth with the select board. However, you know, the majority of the department budgets we anticipate would come in within guidance of the advisory. And would have the benefit of having a full review at advisory and a discussion with Diane and myself. So you may be able to do a little bit more of a summary presentation of those budgets before the, before the select board with, with that full roll-up I mentioned. So. Just wanted to get your, your preference before making, you know, any changes, but. Thought that this is an idea that it might make your, your time a little bit more efficient in January and February. Would love to hear your thoughts and, you know, what sorts of information you'd like to see come for the board.
George has his hand up.
Yep. Jeremy, I like that suggestion. Like some of these smaller budgets that meet guidance, I don't think. It's, you know, we spend, we might just spend a little time on it that's not needed and if they're hitting guidance in there. A smaller budget. I think the major departments we need to discuss anyway. The other thing I just want to make clear, Jeremy, just because it's your first year with us, is that. We, the budgets that report to the select board, we need to make sure we review them before they go to advisor. Think that's an important piece for us to give them feedback and that they're scheduled. So we want to get those on the schedule as early as we can in January. So then they have plenty of time to meet with advisory after they've had a chance to meet with us. I just, I don't like it when they go to advisory first, then come back and say, well, advisory told us this, but we haven't even had a chance to reveal it with them. So that's an important piece. And just to get ahead of it, because Paul and I argue about this every year, we want to. I, I don't think we ever should vote on budgets until we see the whole picture. I don't think we're going to vote on individual budgets as they become, as they come in front of us. Because you can't work in silos like that. So I think it's an important to get, as you know, Jeremy, as a finance committee member in Medfield, you need to look at the whole picture. Before you can make individual decisions on budget.
Yeah, well, I had one point though, you know, Paul, I would, I would second everything George said and add one slight duos is I would include capital also because. We have to be, sometimes there's a trade-off between operating and capital expenditure. So. It would be both budgets, I would think. And with that's subject to not just advisory, but capital budget committee too. Go, go ahead, Paul.
So while I agree with George's wisdom that we need to see the whole picture before we vote on things. I'm a great believer and disagree with George that we need to give guidance to departments. And if somebody is. Working in the right direction and doing what we think is the right thing. That we should be telling them on a preliminary basis that they're on the right track. Simply taking no action and listening to people isn't providing leadership. It's kind of advocating leadership. So. Those are the two sides of the issue, just so that those who are listening to this understand that there is two sides to that issue.
And you're talking about ones that don't report to us because Georgia says the boards, the, the budgets that report to us, we'll see first. So a part will fight, will of course provide input to those. You, Paul, are talking about the ones that don't report to us, is that how? We can, we can provide, I agree, we need to provide input, but we don't, we shouldn't vote on a budget until we know. What if all of a sudden we voted, yes, we support the police budget at this level, but then we realize everybody else has twenty percent increases. Guess what? Maybe I don't support the police budget at that level because we've got to make cutbacks somewhere to make it work elsewhere. So that's, that's my whole point that. We can provide lots of guidance and that's the whole point of them coming to us first, but we don't need to vote on it.
Well, the point is that the guidance from, from individual selectmen means nothing unless it's a vote of the board. So we have a discussion and you get five people saying, gee, we, I'd like the color yellow. I'd like the color black. I'd like the color green. I like the color red. And the guy goes off to do whatever he, he wants as opposed to somebody making a motion that should be. Purple and everybody votes and he knows that's the guy that's getting support.
Oh, I think what you're saying, we don't have, I'm interrupting George. I apologize. What George is saying is we don't have the ability to decide because we don't know what we can afford.
Right. And because we always get to that.
Or, but what can you afford also?
Because Paul, every year when we get to Bloody Saturday, you stand, you, you've been supporting all these budgets all along. Then you stand up and say, well, wait a second, we can't have that big of an increase in the tax rate. But you've been supporting all the budgets all along. So that's my point. It doesn't make sense. The only way to cut back is to, you know, you've got, you've got to look at the big picture. You can't. You can't say, yes, I support all your, all your increases when you don't know what the other increases are elsewhere.
It's okay. We need both aspects. In other words, we know what policies we're in favor of, but we don't know what we can afford until we look at all the other.
Right.
Jeremy, you're gonna add something?
Yes, I'm, I'm hopeful that early on we would have, you know, the benefit of having a full roll-up of all the budgets as submitted. Not necessarily as they're, as, as approved, but early on with that, that we, we would all have the benefit of that full roll-up to see the big picture. So. Just to add the, my two cents there, that's one of the things that I'll be working with Deb on to, to make sure that is available for all to, as a tool.
Yeah, there's some tricky, as George and I can testify, tricky categories, one being police overtime, for example, where it's sort of hard to, to gauge. Some of the budget categories are sort of nonlinear. If we have a lot of turnover, there's a lot of police overtime because the new recruits have to go to school and so they have to have their shifts covered by someone else. So.
Right.
Tricky, tricky.
And there's, and there's things that. We don't have any control over. Our biggest portion of our budget are the schools and, you know, this year's a contract negotiation year for the teachers. So. It, that's going to affect the town's budget as a whole that we have no control over. The only control we have is if everybody's in support of a big increase at the schools, we may have to tighten our belts elsewhere. So anyway.
One thing we, I wasn't here. I was in Amsterdam when you did this. I think it was two years ago. You did one time, we had like a joint advisory hearing, not the public hearing, but in early February, I thought we had. On a Saturday where we had a number of budget makers. Does anyone in favor of? Instead of doing it one-offs over two or three weeks, what if we gave up a half a day Saturday and did them all in one shot?
That worked.
It worked well when we did that.
Yes. I agree with George.
So maybe Diane, do you want to sort of? Maybe show Jeremy what we did. Like I said, that was the year I was in Amsterdam and couldn't participate, but. It seemed like. It, it meant that you weren't like dragging out. Five meetings till ten o'clock. You, you gave.
Exactly. We, yeah, we did it basically in one day. Maybe it took about five hours, six hours. And all the budget makers came in. I, I think there might've been a few representatives from advisory there to hear the, hear the budget maker speak.
Yeah. So that's something we consider, right?
Okay.
Positive feedback from it.
And it helps the department heads not have to go back and forth between select board and advisory and, you know, it's, it makes it a more efficient process.
Well, I guess that what you were saying, George, if they're all there at the same day, they may have to leave early, but we've heard them all. And so we can maybe see what our affordability.
And they can also see where, where we're, what the other things we're considering, you know? Again, I'm anti, I say, I say the word a lot, but a lot of times we operate in silos and we should be more collaborative.
One positive thing this year though, and affordability, I think will be the regional dispatch center. So that's going to save us a fair amount of money. So that's a positive influence. The effects, you know, please fire into certain CPW. Okay, great. So one other item, which is the one I deferred, which is the forty B question on Washington Street. So what happened was, you know, we had the walkthrough of the site. On Washington Street. This is for the forty-unit apartment complex. And we had, there's a representative named Franklin Miller from Massachusetts Housing and Community Development came in person and met with us. And so because of the timing of when we received the proposal, post forty B, we would have normally had to supply our comments to this. And M H C D by December twenty-third. So as we've done in the past with mass housing, we sent a letter to them on December. I think it was the eighth. Is that the right date? Diane can correct the dates, but I think it was December eighth. We asked for a thirty-day extension to provide our comments because we have to get all the boards and committees to weigh in on this and then draft a composite. Way in on this and then draft a composite. Uh memorandum from the, the, the select board from the town to um. You know, M H C D as they consider this uh project, so we asked for a thirty day extension and we submitted that letter to them. And then um the developer um had his consultant. Um respond with a letter saying thirty days was too much of an extension. And they advocated the town only be given a fifteen day extension. And so we didn't agree with that, so then Marion and I and a few other people drafted. Another letter to M H C D, say no, because it's a bigger project and because it's. Falling right during the holiday period, we don't think we can respond with only a fifteen day extension. So we asked, we reiterated our request for a thirty day extension. So the reason we just added that, I'm gonna read something to you, the reason we just added this to the agenda tonight is because. Ten days later, after we asked it for thirty days, we've gotten no response from them whatsoever. And now we've got a kind of vague response, this is only about three sentences, but I think it's worth. Reading it, I think we're gonna have to follow up tomorrow, but um. The fellow I, that we met with, as I mentioned, was Franklin Miller. The person we wrote to is his boss, and her name is Catherine Racer. And so her response that we got just tonight, and it was addressed to Jeremy. Um, we don't do formal extensions, but would urge you to get comments in as soon as possible. We are working on multiple forty Bs right now, and our letters sometimes take a few weeks after expiration of comment period. When do you think you could have comments from the town? Site visit should have happened today, well, it happened two weeks ago, but. That's it, so really. Now, when Franklin wrote to me to introduce himself, he said, let me know if you need an extension, now his boss is saying, we don't, we don't. Offer formal extensions. But she, you may have experience with this, I find this very vague, my. Suggestion is that I'll call Franklin tomorrow, since he's the one that. Came to the site and the one that reached out to me initially, and just ask him. You know, if we should do anything, or maybe I should call Catherine, his boss, but I thought I should start with Franklin. And work my way up the chain, but. I'd like to get the select board's feedback, we, like I said, this came in probably about what, Jeremy, six twenty or something like that tonight. Well, Marion had her hand up and then Paul.
Uh yeah, um you know. In previous uh iterations, and I've done most of these letters, so I remember them quite well. Uh, the letter has been to mass housing, not to D H C D.
I know.
Housing is separate, so uh we're, we're dealing with a group we haven't dealt with before. And obviously, they're, they're inundated, and uh I, and but. Um, they asked, when do you think you can get this letter in? And I would just give them the date that we had for our thirty day extension and say. Given our meeting, meeting schedules and holidays, the earliest we can get it in is this date.
Which would be the January twenty third date.
Right.
Okay.
And I, I suspect they're, they're inundated, and they'll be happy not to have to deal with it until January twenty third.
That could be too. Paul?
So I have a question, when it, when is the original? Comment period.
December, December twenty third.
The original comment period was determined by uh the date that the quote thirty day letter was written by D H C D. And that was written after the site visit, that starts the clock. Uh, the thirty day clock and gives us, yeah, a deadline of December twenty third.
So this is December fifteenth, we have no further meeting before the expiration of the deadline. And I, I, I know that.
Committees. Nor do all the boards and committees that would have to provide us with comments.
And and I know from experience that letters can arrive late and be considered, so um. I think what Marion proposed is the best way to go. This for you to call, answer their question, they've asked you a question. But what time do you really need? And. You should answer that.
Okay.
And you're ready to call the person you have the, the contact with Franklin, I think. If you've already been in contact with, there's no harm in calling him, I think that makes sense to call him first.
Yeah, who did the letter come from, asking when?
Catherine, Jeremy's boss, Franklin's boss, Catherine Racer.
I, I, I think I would contact her directly. And maybe Franklin too. Uh but since the, the question came from her. You know, I would make sure that she's, she's in the loop when we send it out.
Yeah, I'm just saying, maybe he can help advocate for, if Jeff has a relationship with him, maybe he can go to her.
That's right, we, we all met.
You and I walked together on the site visit, just the two of us for a little while too, so. Uh I'm agreeing with both of you, I think we should draft the response to Catherine that you and Paul suggested that um. We, we believe that our proposed uh January twenty third date is when we can have the comments to you, but. I, I.
And just ask Franklin if you should go directly to her, or if he can help you, I mean, I think.
Yeah, just so that he doesn't get blindsided, and it was odd, because when he wrote to me, he says, let us know if you do the extension, and then she says, we don't do extensions, so it's.
Well, I think what you were saying, Jeff, is that they don't do the kind, the extensions in the same way as mass housing does them. They.
Yeah, but Jeremy, I mean Franklin's letter to me said, let me know if you need an extension.
Oh, right, but. I mean, mass housing has these really kind of strict procedures for extensions, and apparently D H C D does not.
Well, we're dealing with a developer, you know, that is challenging sometimes, so I don't wanna, uh I wanna dot our i's and cross our t's and. Put quotation marks and everything else around it.
Yeah, I think that's.
All right, I, I think I'll, I'll do, but why don't you and I talk about drafting the letter uh with Jeremy, the three of us can talk about drafting the letter to Catherine tomorrow. And I might just call Franklin to give him a heads up anyway, so he's.
Yeah, that, that's the way to go.
Any other input on that agenda item? Any select board reports?
I have one that I'd like to bring up. Um Jeremy, I wanna get with you, because I, I wanna propose a Warren article. Um, coming from the select board, uh looking at, this has been talked about in the past. And I see a lot of other towns doing it, combining the treasurer collector position. Um, I think both our current treasurer and our current collector are on board for this, it's something that's way overdue, other towns have done it. I just think it's something we should explore and see if it's the right time for us to do it now.
Thanks, George, yeah, I'd be happy to meet and and discuss that and support you.
Okay. I'll, I'll stop it, it might be free tomorrow, Jeremy, are you gonna be in the office?
I will.
Okay, great.
Any other, any updates on the school, how far, what's the status of school negotiations, George?
They haven't even started.
All right.
You know what's crazy is um, and it came, it came from their side. There's such a backlog of school contracts, like the attorneys that all handle them are still working on ones that have expired.
Ah, fuck, match.
So, so we haven't even started, we've had a couple of meetings, we had an initial like meet and greet, and. We have the committees all formed, but we haven't, we're not starting negotiations till after the new year. Um. That's when we're gonna have our first formal meeting, because what happens is the first three meetings. Um, there's formal rules of these negotiations, o- only in the first three meetings can you propose changes. So typically what happens is the first meeting, the teachers come, teachers come in and propose what they're gonna ask for in the new contract. Second meeting, I and Robin Hunter from um, Robin from Dover. Will come in and present how poor the towns are and what we can only afford. And then we have a third meeting where any other things come out that need to be added or taken away from the contract, and. Then we start negotiating from there, so. So it's all not getting even started until, I think, the first week after the new year. Last time we started it in like October and we were done by February, we literally ended it. We were gonna have a little like get together with our group that had done it, but we couldn't, because we finished the contract like right before COVID hit.
Hmm.
In twenty twenty, so it was, it was literally the timing was unbelievable that we were able to get it done right, just in time.
So, so good luck with putting the school budgets together this year, I guess, huh?
Yeah, exactly. I think typically what they do, um Dawn's very good at this, she's been doing it for a while, that she'll put. Different placeholders in there, so we have a certain amount, and hopefully we don't go up to that amount, but it's, you know, that. She's good at, she's good at putting, putting that together.
Yeah, not just the teachers, but even the legal expenses too, both.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So um. One, one thing that uh uh I wanna add on a humorous note, but related to schools is I was reached out to by the third grade. Head of the third grade teaching unit, they want uh the third grade to be briefed on what the select board does. So um Mary and I are gonna go talk to the eighty kids that are in Pine Hill third grade about what the select board does. But I may invite them for a brief period to, with their parents to one of our select board meetings also, so.
That's a great idea.
Interested in this, so I went and sat in the little tiny chair with. Four third grade teachers, and my, and I'm a run, but my knees were still on my chin, uh but it was kinda cool.
It is amazing, now that I go to parent teacher conferences at the high school, that can actually fit in the chairs back.
I know, I know.
Back when the kids were at Pine Hill, you had to sit in those little tiny chairs, and I'm not a small person.
And so one more thing I want to bring up under select board reports is um. Relates to Diane, we're, we're working, we've been talking about, Eric and I have been talking about this for some time. Um, we're working to create a proposal, we think that we should um. Re-look at the assistant town administrator position and um consider combining it with an H R director. Position, and we would um. Alter the position description for uh for Diane and um. The salary uh for that role, and there, there. Eight towns, or six to eight towns that are all around us that. Have a combined assistant town administrator and H R director in one role. Because as Paul's pointed out just before, H R has been getting very complicated, and while we have a personnel board. You sort of need someone day to day also that's hands on on implementing a lot of things, so. We're um looking at putting that together as an integrated position for Diane and strengthening and and adding a bit to her responsibilities and. Jer, Jeremy and I have also talked about this, so he's aware of it, and um. We'll get everybody's input, but I just wanted, there's nothing to discuss in detail tonight, but. I'm hopeful that on January fifth, we'll have something that we can uh look at um as a, as a group, and it would be include. A salary survey of those um towns that have a combined position, what the market rate is for those, and includes a um. Composite um position description, which would include her current responsibilities and some added H R responsibilities. So this was really more of a heads up to let you know that we were working on that. And I think it'd be, be good for the town, and you know, one of the things. That I felt we could have done better with David Williams was we assigned everything to him, so I think that. Uh we realized that last year when we started talking about H R and having to be a somewhat separate function, so. This is what I've been envisioning and um, I'm, if some, some of you wanna have some input tonight, you can, but we can discuss it. In more detail uh in two weeks.
Can I just make a comment that I support what you're doing and commend you? Uh, uh, this is something that makes a lot of sense, I think it's a great idea. Uh, and let me know how I can help get it done.
Okay. We'll definitely do that. Anybody else? Marion?
Yeah, I think uh I mentioned this once to you, Jeff, that uh. With the, with new responsibilities and and new, and a, another kind of job. Uh, it might be good to uh budget into. It, it, to the budget process, basically um funds for uh for training. And uh.
Yeah, you did, that's a good point. You definitely mentioned that.
Yeah, and definitely, we, uh Diane could look into what she thinks would be most useful.
That's great, great suggestion.
I mean, I'll just say, I mean, obviously, I support it, I've been working on it from the beginning, um. But it also magnifies how much, you know, um with these colas being on a percentage and the way percentages work. People at higher salaries get, you know, arithmetically quite a bit more than lower salaries. And the town, assistant town administrator salary has never been reevaluated, really, in decades. And meanwhile, we looked at conservation minister, everything else, to the point where assistant town administrator is now less. Than almost, I think, a lot, if not most, of the full time employees that have any kind of like. Department role or anything else like that, so it just seems so obvious to me that when we came up with this idea, that we need to evaluate this, and the plumbing information we've seen indicates. That we're right to do this as well, so there'll be more information coming.
Let me just add that Diane did a great job doing everything. Soup to nuts during the, during the time that she was interim, so she was not only handling the, all the. Duties of the town administrator, she was also doing the H R piece, and everything went. Very well during the time that she was. Our interim town administrator, and I think we're all, we all owe her a debt of gratitude, but she's kind of proven.
Much for that, thank you.
It's kind of proven, proven herself that she'd be ideal for this, this uh expanded the assignment.
Yeah, that's definitely the case, and soup to nuts, the nuts part was certainly very frequent. So um. Uh, that's all I have for select board reports, Jeremy, do you have any uh?
I've just, I have, I have one more, Jeff, I have one.
Sorry, I'm sorry, George.
No problem, I just wanted to remind people that there, there's gonna be a menorah lighting on Tuesday, on the twentieth. Which last year I attended, it was a great event, it was some, it was the first time we'd done it in Sherburne, a lot of Jewish families, it really meant a lot to them in town. It was nice, I actually lit, lit the first candle as my, my family is Jewish, and it was, it was very nice to um. Be a part of it, and it was a good ceremony, and I'm so glad to see that this year, it was freezing cold that night, so I'm glad we found a place to do something inside. Jeannie, I see your hand up, so probably you may have a little bit of an update on that.
Um, it's gonna be at the police station, because we can't use the room upstairs, so we have the police station conference room for a little reception afterwards. There'll be, I think the rabbi said hot chocolate and some donuts, and so it'll be good.
It was, it was a great event last year, I'll definitely be there with.
Good.
One of my kids, so I will, but it, it's great.
Thank you. Now, now Jeremy, I don't know if you have any.
Uh, just three, three little uh heads up or announcements, um. Just uh wanted to put out a plug for folks to complete the climate resiliency plan survey that's been distributing, distributed, um hopefully. Uh, you've seen it and can, can participate that in that, I'll help inform that climate resiliency plan that's being put together. Um, also wanted to let folks know, due to the holidays falling on Sunday, town hall will be closed on December twenty sixth. And closed on January second, uh due to the, where the holidays fall on the, on the calendar. Uh, and just wanted to give a, a note of thanks as well to the Bogastow Garden Club. For the beautiful holiday decorations that are on town hall.
By the way, the new trees have Christmas lights on them also, I'm not sure who, who had the hand in that, I suggested it to you in about three weeks. I'm not sure who, whether Janet uh Walsh or who was involved in that.
Jeannie.
It was the highway department. I just got the lights.
They look great.
Yeah, so I have a, an addition that uh was reminded by Jeremy mentioning the climate. Uh, uh survey, uh there, there's another survey out uh. To get residents' opinions on the trails. How they're used, what they like, what they don't like, what needs to happen, so. If you see that survey, you can easily, you know, get access to it, there's a Q R code and. Uh, yeah, so complete that one too. Please.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn the select board session to December fifteenth?
I moved.
Second.
Marion?
I.
George?
I.
Paul?
Oh, I'm having so much fun, I'm almost inclined to vote now, but I love you.
That would be, that would be a Chuck Yon maneuver, uh Eric.
I.
And I am, I as well, thanks, everybody.
Have a good night, happy holidays.
Good night, happy holidays.
Night.
Night.